We're now calling this regular meeting of the Chavano Park City Council to order. First item is the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the invocation. The pledge will be led by Pete Miller and the invocation will be led by Conrad Kirkendall. If you'd please stand and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bow our heads, please. Lord, we come before you with gratitude. We thank you for being a God of love and for another beautiful day. We pray for the wisdom, for the strength and the courage to use it. May we put the interest of others above our own, in the Lord's name. Amen.
Okay, we have a citizen to be heard, Vicki Maisel, 111 Painted Post. Vicki, if you would come forward. Thank you very much.
City living country charm, there is not a dang thing charming about a digital billboard. We are a scenic city and as a scenic city, we promised to not erect new billboards. We will lose our scenic city status. We cannot regulate, according to the Supreme Court, what is on those billboards. So if a plastic surgeon would like to show us his before and afters, that'll be on the billboard. If a gentleman's club wants to show their wares, that will be on the billboard. And if Viagra wants to be on the billboard, well guys, you get to explain to your kids what that means. We have accommodated the developers as a city in a number of ways over the years. When they wanted to do Bentley Manor, we accommodated and made smaller lot size. When they wanted to do the Pond Hill Villas, which are townhouses, we accommodated the smaller lot size. When Starbucks wanted to come to Chavano Park, we accommodated by changing our sign ordinance so that they could have the same signs for our Starbucks as every other Starbucks in the nation. When the bank wanted to buy property in Chavano Park, we accommodated and changed our ordinances so they could have a drive-through. When Whataburger came, we once again accommodated so they could have their Whataburger signs. And we accommodated for four nursing homes in Chavano Park. There are thirty acres of undeveloped land still in Chavano Park. And no doubt, they'll be looking for some accommodations. Will they really be getting them if we're being sued over a digital billboard? I think the citizens would say not. The Fifth Circuit ruled that in Austin, billboards could be turned down based on aesthetic reasons. Aesthetically, we can say, "We do not want to have a billboard in Chavano Park." So I guess your thing is to decide whether we want to be a scenic city or a billboard city. But if you give up our scenic city status, what's going to go next to accommodate the developers? Are we going to give our tree city? We going to give up our national wildlife habitat? It's up to you, but we do not need a digital billboard in Chavano Park.
Thank you Vicki. Okay, that brings us to item number four, City Council Comments. Maggie?
Glad to have folks here and we're looking forward to a big Fourth of July celebration on Saturday. So I hope everyone will come. It's going to be nice. Thank you.
Okay, Buddy?
Welcome, everyone.
Lee?
Glad to have everybody here today and sure everybody's here with the wonderful willing people and try to balance everything so that it works out best for the city in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Pete?
Yeah, I'd like to share a few interesting facts about the Fourth of July. So the first ones is Americans spend over $1 billion on fireworks a year. I'm surprised by that. Another one is the soldiers of the Constitutional Army were given extra allowances on rum to celebrate the Independence Day. Calvin Coolidge was the only president born on the Fourth of July. And John Adams and Thomas Jefferson both died on the Fourth of July. But the most amazing Fourth of July fact is we're going to have over fifteen thousand water balloons on Saturday, so please be there to enjoy it.
Thank you very much. Conrad, you had something to add in your City Council comments today, so I'd let you go last. Well, something to share with us today.
So, we had a little barbecue cook-off and apparently, I am not the winner. So, we do have something for the winner. Do we do this now or during a...
No, no, this is in your time.
I technically have... No, I'm not even on.
Curtis, come on up here.
First annual, or what do we call this? This is the first annual competition between staff and council.
Well, just a second, I don't know that we've got the lights on. We want to make sure that we get a really good picture Curtis. Yeah, Curtis, you want to have a really good picture here. Please turn on the lights. I don't want there to be any shadows.
You get a good selfie? All right. Thank you. You're welcome. All right. Got it?
I got it.
No speech? It was the best Ellen Priskin I've ever had.
Okay, brings us to item number 5.1, Proclamation. Ryan Mattson, appointment to the United States Service Academy at West Point. Ryan's one of our hometown boys and we appreciate Congressman Gonzalez considering him. I've had the distinct honor and pleasure of serving on the boards of review to make recommendations to Congressman Gonzalez for the last three years. And of all the kids from South Texas that I have ever reviewed, Ryan just got the highest rankings that I have ever given to anybody before. And there may be kids that come behind him that rank as high as Ryan, but I'm just telling you that it was night and day as far as Ryan. So our proclamation from the city is, whereas Ryan Mattson is a high school senior at Great Hearts Northern Oak, has been awarded a congressional nomination from Congressman Tony Gonzalez and has accepted an appointment to the United States Military Academy at West Point, exemplifying academic prowess, leadership, and dedication to serving our country. And whereas acceptance into West Point is a testament to Ryan's unwavering commitment to excellence and the culmination of years of hard work, sacrifice, and perseverance. And whereas Ryan's achievement not only brings pride to his family and friends, but also reflects positively on our entire community, highlighting the caliber of individuals our community nurtures and supports. And whereas Ryan's commitment to service and leadership extends beyond sports and civic engagement, as an Eagle Scout with the Boy Scouts of America, Ryan led the construction of a Killed in Action Memorial honoring the ultimate sacrifice of Chavano Park veterans. His efforts were recognized by local media and unveiled to KIA family members in attendance. And whereas the City Council recognizes the honor and privilege it is to have such a promising and exceptional individual among our residents, inspiring others to strive to greatness. Now therefore, I, Robert Warner, Mayor of the City of Chavano Park, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby commend and congratulate Ryan Mattson for his remarkable achievement and wish him continued success as he embarks in this noble journey at West Point Military Academy. Now, in addition to that, and we would like to think that our proclamation is special, but the really truly special part of this evening is that Ryan's parents, Morgan and Megan, will be receiving on behalf of Ryan, not only our proclamation, but the certificate of special recognition from Tony Gonzalez's office. And so I'm going to ask you all to come forward and you all can accept my proclamation and Brittany Smith is here on behalf of Congressman Gonzalez to present the certificate.
You gotta go up in the... Go up there. Go up there. On behalf of Congressman Gonzalez, I want to tell them how proud we are of not only Ryan, but also all of them. Thank you.
One, two, three.
Is it okay if I say something real quick? What do you want to get the proclamation first? Oh my goodness! Well, Megan, on behalf of the City of Chavano Park, I want to commend you on having such a fine young man. Some people thank their husbands and fathers for these recognitions, but we all know that at the beginning and end of the project, it is the mom who does all of this. So, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Couple of things, so it's my fault and the miscommunications Ryan's not here because it's as important to him and he was really just so honored and humbled that y'all were doing this for him and so I'm sorry, but he's at another event, he's got, we leave Sunday and he reports on Monday. And so he's kind of, his whole, this week is just jammed up with like last-minute stuff before he's gone. And so I'm sorry, but I did want to say a couple of things. I mean, thank you to Mr. Bill. He started the idea with this fantastic Eagle Scout project and just really mentored Ryan through the whole thing. And then also the Chief Fox and Chief Dover because y'all helped with the flag retirement ceremony, which was a really critical part of the Eagles and steps on this foundation. He's always wanted to serve and then he just needed to figure out the best path forward and y'all were really critical for that. And then also, thank you and Brittany, I mean, y'all helped so much and I know you did the interviews for Ryan and it was important to him, but gosh, Brittany, we worked with you for like over a year, right? Ryan was writing you and calling you and I know you've got a lot of things on your plate and you were so kind just to spend some time and give him some pointers and tips and things like that. So, thank you so much.
Well, congratulations to your mother and father. Thank you. Oh, you're welcome.
Due to scheduling issues, we're going to move item 5.2 to the next City Council meeting without objection. With no objection, we proceed to item 5.3, Recognition Employee Officer Schumacher for earning the 2023 Mothers Against Drunk Drivers MAD Award.
Evening, Council. Every year, Mothers Against Drunk Driving are MAD. They host their annual Take the Wheel Law Enforcement Recognition Luncheon in order to recognize officers who exemplify a strong commitment to DOWI enforcement within their communities. The Chavano Park Police Department participates in this event every year by nominating those officers from within the department who make the largest impact from the previous calendar year. At last week's award luncheon, Chavano Park Police Officer Brandon Schumacher was recognized by MAD for his outstanding achievements with their 2023 Distinguished Enforcement Hero Award. In support of this accomplishment tonight, I'd like him to be recognized. And Award Officer Schumacher with the Chief's Award of Excellence in front of Council.
Step up. Photo's better up there. Hang on.
Oh, yes.
One, two, three.
Wow, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Brings us to item six. All matters listed under this item are considered routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by any alderman on any item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Do we have a motion to approve and/or accept items 6.1 through 6.5? We have a motion from Lee. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Maggie. There being no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. Brings us to item number seven, City Manager Reports. All matters listed under this item are considered routine by the City Council and will only be considered at the request of one or more aldermen. Coincidence with each listed item, discussion will generally occur at the end of the normal agenda. Does anybody want to pull anything? Okay, that brings us to item number eight, Regular Agenda Items. Item 8.1, Discussion/Action/Update on City Phase 1 Street Reconstruction Project. Curtis?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So I'll go through the updates on Phase 1A, 1B, and 1C where we're at. So Phase 1A, this is with city bond money, approved in 2022, so where we're at, about seventy percent through the project on cliffside, we're just waiting for the final asphalt on phases one and two of that. That's all in yellow on that map. Despite the rain in the last week or two, they've actually got a lot of progress done on the concrete work on that phase three in red. Satellites like to begin next week as well as the first layer of asphalt on phase three. Once that final, that first asphalt on phase three, then they'll come back and they'll do all phase one, two, and three cliffside and one final coat of asphalt. And then the cul-de-sac will likely start in August. So on Phase 1B, this is the $4 million in federal funding that was approved by Tony Gonzalez and we're with the HUD right now. So we have an executed agreement, since the last time we presented, we have executed agreement on May 21st. Colliers, our city engineer, has began the environmental review here in June. They have given us, advised us, the environment will likely take one to two months, we're going to get something called a categorical exemption, checklist only, a lot faster. But the environmental will cover things like wetlands, archaeological, endangered species, sociological noise, and other items. We're not anticipating any issues with this. And so, we can kind of provisionally think with this engineering construction timeline, which you've shown before, might be able to start it as soon as September of this year with a town hall with the residents, then we do the hundred percent construction set, we go out to bid, get a contractor, just like we did with the Phase 1A. And then Phase 1C, this is part of the $4 million in federal funding. So Days of Fall is predicted to take about $3 million, we got $4 million funding, so we had to present extra projects so we can make sure that we utilize every single last dollar in that federal grant. So this will reconstruct about 9,500 linear feet of post oakway in Semin Oak in Chavano Creek. The streets will be reconstructed using replace-in-place full-depth reconstruction, means all the material on the road from curb to curb is going to be ripped out and then all new materials will be put in. But what we're going to be doing like we did over on the old side of Chavano Park in East North Military where we are concrete stabilizing, where we're doing lots of excavation and moving the road and all sorts of stuff. This will be funded with a mixture of federal and bond monies, so it's 1.3 total to do everything on that map. We have about a million federal funding. If it comes in under, we have extra room to grow into that and take advantage of every last dollar. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions, comments? Bill, do you have anything that you'd like to add? Johnny?
The only thing I would say is that the first thing we must do is get that environmental study done and then go out for bid. That determines what we're going to be able to do in Phase 1 Charlie. And then we'll have about $2 million, maybe 2.5, to then consider for what we're going to use in coat application in Chavano Creek to extend the life there. And we'll bid that out. That'll be another separate project. And we'll be able to expend all those funds based upon the bids and we can ebb and flow the increase. We're going to bring that to Council in a few months.
Okay, very good. Everybody okay? Okay. Item 8.2, Discussion/Update, The Way Ahead on Possible Signage Along Loop 1604 Corridor. Bill?
Okay, last month, I brought to you a draft MOU with Rogers' Chavano Ranch executed by, ultimately will be Bitter Blue. And you approved that, continued upon final language associated with agreement and concurrence from our attorney or whatever. We have not executed that agreement. So this is the first update. And that's because we're still batting forth a couple pieces of language. And what we're considering mostly is not the MOU, which establishes the outline, it's mostly the lease and sublease agreements and certain things like that. So, again, all that triggers a request for proposal, and then there are proposals given to us that you will then really consider whether or not this is something that you're going to approve or not. In other words, you can't do and get the proposal unless you ask for a proposal, you receive somebody's submission, and then you can evaluate that submission based upon what income is going to be expected to be received. And you weigh the pros and cons of aesthetics, so to speak, versus the income and the placement of the signs. And what is the sign design? Is it branded, is it branded based upon Chavano Park, et cetera? So there's a long way to go in this process. Initially, we thought it might go faster if we received, we ironed out some of the points that's taken a little bit longer than possible. As we briefed you, the whole purpose of us wanting a lease from the Rogers Development is so that we're in the driver's seat and we can establish the basic terms and we're, the city is the continuity associated with this. So I did give you a little bit of a handout. And before, and the first thing that I wanted to talk about is the approval process. And then the next thing I'm going to talk about is maybe an updated timeline, okay? So, the question has been asked to us, what is the approval process? Because just like everything else, the first thing that our sign ordinance does is prohibit all signs. And then it says, "In these areas, these signs are authorized." And so in the, just to remind you, there is a 1604 urban signage ordinance that is, there's a corridor ordinance, and that establishes two sign zones, so to speak. There's the 1604 and there's a La Celle-Somme. And what the ordinance does says that if you meet the qualifications, you can propose a sign plan that can be then considered by Chavano Park and that that sign plan can then be approved on top of anything else that's going on. In 2014, Bitter Blue submitted a sign plan, and you have a copy of that and that's right here, okay? What I provided for you is the sign plan and behind that is the sign ordinance. And so, the bottom line is that upon consideration of a proposal, the way that we would approve that is to amend the sign plan, which is done by ordinance. And it's done by going through the Planning and Zoning Commission and then through the City Council. So, that has been vetted through the attorney. And what we have left to do is to draft out the actual language and then the plan and then get okay from that. But, that leads me to, and then what I gave you was a copy of what might be a Chavano Park example. This isn't a proposal, this is something that we kind of drafted up, how would we brand our signs differently, just like we brand our corridor signs? And so, again, if we decide to go out for a proposal, a company would have to propose something and it would have to illustrate that we are branding that and it's not just a typical sign. For timelines, what this might be is, it is possible that we reach agreement with Bitter Blue by 1 July and then release a RFP. And then if their RFP would be released 30 days later, we would receive a series of proposals. And if that happens, we could then take it to the Planning and Zoning Commission on the 7th of August, hold a public hearing, and then do a public hearing in the 26th of August and have consideration by City Council. It's 50-50 whether that timeline will go, but, or it may be pushed into one month later on or however. The key point is that there's still some key negotiating that has to go, we're getting really close to it. And in fact, we have a, we have a meeting next week to try to finalize this and get over any sticking points.
Next week or tomorrow?
What's that?
Next week or tomorrow?
Tomorrow. We have, yeah, we have an initial meeting tomorrow and then we may have some follow-ons after that. So, essentially, that kind of gives you a timeline. There's still a lot of decisions to have to be made on this. And, but we have a means to do it and then it will be teed up to City Council. And the real, the real key point comes is when you, we receive the proposals and we evaluate the proposals based upon the merits. So, long way to go on that. That's all I have.
Okay. Any questions? Pete?
Yeah, Bill. So, thanks for the update. As we go through this process, you know, we heard from concerns about this, and as we go through this process, I want to make sure that I have a really clear understanding of all the aspects to this as we get questioned to ensure that, one, is that we speak in a common voice and know the facts from the rumors. So, as we go through this, a business case would be really helpful to understand. I think this could be a significant impact for Chavano Park and I'd like to understand what the business case would be. And the other question I have, is there an impact study that would be required before this could be done?
I'm 90%, 95% positive that there is no impact, but I can confirm. And then, got your point on the business case. Obviously, that's the key decision. I mean, what is, what is the proposal and potential revenue? And then, where does that, how does that weigh out against everything else? So, we should be able to do that, for sure.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, one observation, you talked about going to Planning and Zoning, taking them in ordinance, Planning and Zoning reviews ordinances and makes recommendations to City Council. It does not have a veto, they're just reviewing things to, so that we have an extra set of eyes as far as what is going to come to us. There will not be a thumbs up or a thumbs down necessarily at the planning and zoning level that is an enforceable vote where City Council would be overruling them because they're just going to make a recommendation on ordinance language changes that we're considering. Yeah, Buddy?
Bill, isn't it a fact that we currently do have electronic signs that have been approved here in the city? And basically, we don't have any kind of oversight of their current content if they were erected, if they were approved? Is that correct?
We have an electric sign that's been approved at the, for Love and Care. We have an electric sign that is the Neighborhood Market.
Drive-caring. Okay. I just want to make sure we weren't reinventing the wheel.
There is some, there is likely, and I can't tell you what it is now, some discussion and control that we will have on content. You know, you can't control content, but there is some discussion that we've had preliminary on how we might be able to influence that.
Okay. And then, of course, we also have a digital sign here. Maggie?
My question is, explain to me the difference between an electrical sign and a digital sign.
They're the same.
Okay. So, we already have two. Is that a monument?
The monument at City Hall is also electrical, digital.
So that's three, three signs.
Three locations.
Okay. And earlier, our citizen, Ms. Maisel, spoke about the many changes we had made to our ordinances, and I don't remember all of them, but... to our ordinances, and I don't remember all of them, but have we ever had any negative input from these, from the changes, from these ordinances?
Well, I've been here since 2013. I won't say there has never been any. I've not heard of any. You know, you could take any issue, pretty much, and run the gamut, and there'll be people that may have issue with it. But there's not been any loud, you know, there's not been any vocal issues with the signage that we currently have.
Okay. And I'm aware of two people who are not in favor of the signs. Do, are there others? Have you had other input? I thought there would be other folks here this evening. Negative input from our citizens? Because I, I have had none, and I've talked to a lot of people, but I don't know. I'm just one person.
I think I received a question, we received a question from someone that appeared to be not in favor, but I don't think they fully understand the issue. But I can't speak on behalf of, you know, broadly, how this is being portrayed. I mean, because we really, we're rolling it out. We haven't even decided anything, and we're just considering it. You can't actually make a decision until you, you research it. And that's where we are right now.
But from the preliminary information that we have now, is it appropriate for me to ask other council members if they've had negative or positive input?
People can offer up anything like that. I can offer up that I did exchange emails and a telephone call with one of our citizens. It was like, oh, I can't believe we're doing that. And then I explained, you know, we've been talking about this at the budget workshop level for four or five years. This is not something that is just Hercules that is sprung forth from Jupiter, just like that. It's, we have, we've been working this for a long time in a businesslike manner. This is, our sign ordinance, the fact that we have modified it on several occasions. When Don Wallace, Tommy Payton, and I were sitting together to draft the original versions of these ordinances, we made them as restrictive as we could have, thought we could get by with and still have a deal. Understanding that they were going to be loosened up over time, because they were intended to make everybody comfortable. And after we became comfortable with what was there, you can never take back what you give, but you can give more as you feel comfortable about the situation. But I've had very limited input, and some citizen input has been, well, we trust city council, and by golly, at the level of revenue that they're talking about, that really goes a long way in a community like Chavano Park.
Yeah, I've had, I've had one other person through a phone call voice concern and really didn't like the idea. So there was a fairly lengthy phone call, kind of explaining what I knew. But it's important to understand that this is a business decision for the city, not just a sign approval, billboard sign approval. This has to do with, with city business, possible revenue coming in. And so I think it raises it to a little different level. I certainly understand and respect Vicki's opinion and where they stand on that. And it's important to take that in. But that was quite a long time ago that we had this, and we have a different situation now. So for me, it highlights it more than just a decision if we allow signs or not, because this is a business decision. It's fairly significant to the city.
Okay, Pete?
Yeah, Maggie, I as well have had some people that had some concerns. But as this whole thing has developed, you know, there's been a lot of misunderstandings. And because it has been still in the development process, we haven't been able to share all the details, because they're still being formed. So I think part of it has to do with just not understanding all the details of the situation. And Bill, I do have one question for you. So 1604 has two sides of the highway. And if we were not to allow the signage on our side of the highway, is it high probability that it would go on the other side? And could you say a little bit about that?
Well, San Antonio, as I understand it, prohibits new billboards. But there already is at least one or maybe more billboards. I haven't looked past to the west of Northwest Mulholland Highway that can be converted to digital. And you, and any company can take out a service tube and put another one where they want it. So we know that it's a high-demand area, because we've had a number of sign companies inquire about it, not just one. And so, you know, you would have to have landowners that would be willing to do it. There's more than likely landowners that are willing to do it. And so I can't speak definitively, but you know, the probability is at some point in time, certainly, especially in the sign locations that already exist can be easily converted.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Brings us to item 8.3, Discussion, Action, Proposed GST Repair and Repainting, Young Engineering. Bill?
In 2023, while Brandon Peterson was here, we had our ground storage tanks, our elevated storage tank inspected, as we do on an annual basis every year. About the time that he was leaving, it just happened in that transition, we got the report. And then what it showed was, in the Hubner ground storage tank, for the first time, there was some surface rust on the top. You'll recall, it was repainted, I'm going to say in 2011. By 2013, the top layer had already flaked off. We had that company repaint it, and then it lasted a few years. It started flaking, and we've been monitoring it. That storage tank is related to this one, but not the same as what I'm talking about here. We've got to repair it. And I'm just going to tell you, in consultation with our engineers, that'll have to be done probably in the wintertime, when we can take Hubner off of, out of action for a month or so. And then the demand will be less for water, and then we can do that correctly. More concerning, not at the, is the ground storage tank at well site one on Chavano Drive. We have a picture of it here. And this looks worse than it is, because what you see a lot of is staining. And what you, what that is supposed to be is the vent. The vent's been taken off of it. It's laying on the side, at the backside of that. Underneath that, there was iron that has rusted, and then that rust color has moved out this way. That's a picture of it after the inspection, and Public Works took that. We've cleaned all that rust off. We've painted it, and we put the vent on, and it's functional. But we're, you know, it's in need of repair. Now that, what the Public Works guys did was we considered, hey, is this repairable? So we drained it out. We put scaffolding in it. We had it inspected. It is repairable. In fact, you can, you know, these tanks can rust quite a bit. You can drive down the highway. You can see a number of them. And they're, they're rusting for years, and you wonder why they don't take care of them. This, this had a little bit of rust in 2022. It's remarkable, the amount that occurred from 22 to 23. And so this is an immediate priority. Now, I talked to several engineering firms, you know, people that do these ground storage tanks, they're just not, most engineering firms don't have these people. Or if they're large ones, they're in North Carolina, or they're somewhere else. But our previous city engineer, young associate, Leonard Young, he was, this is his subject matter expertise. He was a SAWS engineer. And for years and years and years, that's what he did with water tanks. Then he formed his own company. For a period of time, he was our engineer. And when we did the elevated storage tank, that was significantly complicated, because we took that out of service. We intended to do it in the fall. It ended up being in the spring, and our Public Works guys were on duty 24/7. And we were manually operating our SCADA and making sure that we were filled up. Anyway, the long of the story is this, is that I asked several firms, but I finally got Leonard to give me a proposal. You have in your pack a proposal for the engineering services, essentially to design the construction documents, which becomes the RFP. We've got a proposal for about $4,000. There is engineer work in the bidding phase to evaluate this, to make sure it's done. And then there's engineering work in the construction phase, based upon consulting, et cetera. All that adds up to about $10,000. There is a, just like we have a street inspector, and we hired Pape Dawson to do street inspections, there is a water tank inspections program that, there is firms that do that. And so Leonard uses a particular firm, and that proposed cost is $15,000. That exceeds my contracting and procurement authority, and I want approval from the city council to approve this task order. I've already approved the first three, so I can get the process started, get those construction documents done, because we've got to get that done. In consultation with Leonard, what I said was, well, I don't know that we need a engineering firm, I mean, another firm to come inspect on a daily basis on this. I mean, because literally, we've already contracted a repair firm. They've given us a bid, and we could just go do that without an engineer seal. We wouldn't have an engineered warranty on it, and probably not the smartest thing to do. And so after really deliberating about this for several months and considering courses of action, I know we need to get an engineered document that's bid out. We need to then select it, and then we're going to need engineer oversight during the process. In my conversation with Leonard, there are certain companies that have a reputation for doing these things and needing minimal oversight. And so depending upon which firm we pick, you know, we may or may not need a construction inspection program for $15,000. And that would be something that we would decide later on. I am asking for approval of that here, based, and then we would make that decision in consultation with the engineer after the bid is made. But again, your document is pretty detailed. It talks about what the number of site visits. Because essentially, this is, this tank will have to be sandblasted down to the metal, just like we did the elevated, inside and out. And then this piece right here will have to be embolted, and there'll have to be a repair done of that, and that'll have to, that top piece will have to be replaced. And there will have to be some oversight. So the question is going to be at the time, whether our Public Works Director can do that with, along with an engineer, or do we want someone that does this, that's going to be there every day? Talking with Johnny, he provided oversight previously on a ground storage tank in Florisville. So that's something to be determined. But I don't want to mess around with it. I want to give you a briefing, tell you where we are on that. It's going to probably take a month to get the documents done. We'll, we'll release the request for proposal, and then we'll start evaluating it.
Okay, thank you, Bill. We have a motion. Do we have a motion to approve the professional services agreement as proposed by city staff?
Motion approved.
We have a motion from Conrad. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Buddy. We're now open for discussion. Is there any discussion? Pete?
So, Bill, one of the quick questions is, a lot of times when you go down these roads, you're a lot better off just buying a new tank. Has there been a back-of-the-envelope look at what a new tank costs?
I did ask Johnny that, and I want to say that he said it was about $200,000.
Okay, so the costs that we're looking at are just the engineering costs, and then you're going to have the repair cost as well?
Yes, and I think it was about $40,000 to $50,000, but I can't confirm. Once you get the actual specifications from the engineer, they may be higher specifications than what the initial proposal was.
Okay. As my experience, as I've kind of gone down this road, they were smaller tanks, but the issue I got into is there was a lot of surprises when I got into the tank. It's just, it's a very difficult exercise to go through and sandblast on the inside and recoat. So just consider the possibility of that, and I would run some numbers.
Yeah. A question, Pete, you raised a really great question. These things cost $200,000. You know, we could be easily spending $75,000 just to get here. Is that for a painted one, or is that $200,000 from soup to nuts? Or is that, hey, the tank is $200,000, and then you have to get it painted?
That's probably just to buy the tank, and then you probably have other costs. You know, maybe we need to explore that as well before we go on. Once we get the proposal, right, we don't have to accept the proposal. We can then say, ah, you know what, let's look at option B.
I just know that there's a lot of tank manufacturers out there, and a lot of times you can, you can get a special deal on one. Or, and actually, the other thing is, once you go and repair this, you still have an old tank. So typically, they don't last as long in the future.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, there are no other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries 5-0. Item number 8.4, Presentation, Discussion, June 3 Meeting, 2023 Town Plan Feedback. Bill?
I'm going to give an overview, primarily for the purpose of the audience who may be looking at the video at home. Because we've kind of briefed this, we did brief this in more detail at the last workshop. If I could go to the first slide. And essentially, what we did in the 2023 Town Plan had 58 recommendations and action steps for six focus areas. And what we wanted to do was go to residents and citizens of Chavano Park and have them look at this, come together, and then provide recommendations for really three things. What opportunities should be prioritized in the next year's budget cycle? What opportunities can be deferred? And did we miss anything? And so we did, we did meet together, and we, several things happened. We conducted a survey. We asked all the, approximately 50 of our residents to rank order the priority of each one of these tasks by focus areas, and we received 38 responses. And we presented that to a subset of those 50 people. We essentially had a working group of 25 people. And we briefed those survey results. We had a working lunch at Pisano's. It was a three-hour session. And for two hours, we broke those 25 residents into five groups, five groups of five. And they considered the survey results, and then the idea is we asked them to rank order these three questions. We received five sets of input for each one of the six focus areas, and I provided that summarized to you specifically. Now, I'm not going to go through the whole thing, but I wanted to go to the next slide to kind of show you that, for example, we had a focus area called Community Engagement. And there are nine action steps in that focus area. And that we asked the five groups to rank order the three that should be prioritized. And you can see that six of the nine actually received a priority emphasis. And only three of the nine received a defer. And so this information is summarized, not by focus group, but we've done that for each one of the focus areas. So you can see we did that for Commercial Development. And you can go to the next slide, Property Maintenance and Zoning, Talent Management and Retention, one more slide, Public Infrastructure, and Long-Term Finances. So that's the overall results. Each of you have a specific, the exact copy and replica of the input from each one of the working groups, so you can refer to that. And I would just remind you, if, go to the next slide, next slide. This, this is an example of the survey results. And that went out to, and we got 38 responses. I'm not going to go over that. But we have results for each one- I'm not going to go over that, but we have results for each one of the six focus areas. If you can bump it up to the, the next section, Curtis, next, 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 next. We did a staff analysis of each one of the focus areas, and is it a, a low effort and cost versus, and low impact, or is it low effort and cost versus high impact? Is it a high cost and low impact, a high cost and high impact? And that's kind of a swag, but we, we're pretty certain on that. To give you an example of what one looked like, go to community engagement, and you can see that if you have a low cost, but it's low impact, that's kind of a nice thing to do, but, you know, you're not getting much impact. What you really want to do is focus in on low cost and effort, but what's high impact? And so out of the nine, we considered three of them. Low cost, but high impact, those are the, the best things to do. But on the other hand, there's a little bit higher cost, but you also have a high impact in quad three. So each one of the focus areas, six of them, we've outlined that for you. It's in this, in your slide packet. It's on the website. Folks can look at that. And that pretty much summarizes where we are. This feedback will be used in the budget process, and I'm sure citizens have engaged you along the way as well. That's, that's all I have.
Thank you, Bill. Any follow-on questions, comments from council members? Pete?
Bill, if you were to say what are the top three messages you walked away with, what would they be?
Well, the excitement that the folks had in their realization that there was a town plan, and that, that they were able to participate. And, and then the third thing is that, that the city council was asking them for input. You know, so I think we raised awareness of the town plan. We asked certain people to participate, and, you know, there's the group of folks that participated. A lot of these folks are volunteers already on certain councils, but a lot of them are community leaders. And so the fact that city council asked them to do that, I think is an important message to, to take away.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Anybody else? Okay. That brings us to 8.5, discussion, possible amendments to Chapter 36 zoning and City Policy Number 18, to update the criteria for granting of variances to allow certain variations in ordinance standards without approval of the Board of Adjustments, and to allow possible additional special exceptions. Curtis?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So just a reminder of why this, where this, what is this that's coming back to you? This long document. This comes, stems from, while we were working on a fee schedule earlier this year, that we know, staff provided that variance special exception hearings are costing significantly more to the city, and they required a lot of effort. While they were deliberating, council on the fees, council requested if there was any amendments to ordinances that could basically reduce the amount of hearings that happen for very mundane or very, you know, reasonable uses from residents. And so on the March council meeting, there was a motion to direct Planning and Zoning Commission to review Chapter 36 and return back, and this is what it's returning after months of working with Planning and Zoning Commission. So I'm going to go through five main topics here. Five main topics here tonight. The, the first one is the hardest to get through. So the variance criteria. So this is kind of separate from the residents, but as a part of this was also the criteria of which variances would be considered by the Board of Adjustment. I figured, let's get through the hardest part first. When you go to that part of this, you see a ton of red. But to break it down for you, there's three new, two were combined, or two were deleted, rather, as redundant, and one was combined with each other. So we get away from all the red. What are we actually proposing in this? This is a nice, clean version. I won't read all this for you, but the two new ones that are, three new ones that are added, two come specifically from state law, and the one that's recommended by your attorney is coming from case law. Otherwise, it is a moving and changing of language, but if you read through it, the, the intent of, from the reader would get from it is not significantly changed. But that is a part of this ordinance, and again, tonight, it's just a discussion, because there are a lot of moving parts of this ordinance, and we just wanted to put this in front of you so you can get a first sort of crack at it. So the new situational setback reduction we have proposed in here. So when we went through this with the planning and zoning, one of the things they asked us was, well, first, go look at all the history that the Board of Adjustment for variance and special exceptions, is there any trends? Is there anything that we can get from that, from past experience? Well, the only thing we got from that, when our records are somewhat limited, we only have a few per year, we went back all the way for the last six or seven years, is that for, since the city council in 2017 established a special exception, it's five for five with the Board of Adjustment. Every single one that has been proposed of the board has been approved. That was the only clear trend line that we got out of it. So we propose today, someone with a special exception. So if their house, their side of rear setback, part of their house, a butts, a street north military, Dezavalas, City San Antonio, Commercial District, or a green belt on a plat, they can today go to the Board of Adjustment and request a special exception to reduce their setback by up to 50, side of rear setback by 50%. We propose no, take out the Board of Adjustment approval for this, and simply have it as a by right, automatic setback reduction, if you, in normal permitting and plan review. If your house, if your lot meets these four conditions, you can get an up to 50% reduction in your side and rear. On accessory buildings, changes here we propose. Propose allowing accessory buildings under eight feet in height, which is, so in our ordinance, our portable buildings are allowed within setbacks, accessory buildings are never allowed in setbacks, that's the way it is today. A portable building not only is meant to be movable of certain, built certain materials, but it's eight feet in height limited. We have run in, in situations in the past, though, with like greenhouses and other types of structures, it's just a simple shed, and it has to be bolted onto as called foundation, but it's still eight feet tall, and still is otherwise a pretty movable minor building, that they could not put it within their setbacks. So we propose adding accessory buildings under eight feet in height, same as a portable building can be allowed within five feet of property line. And we also explicitly stated in here that all other accessory buildings are not allowed within building setbacks. Within special exceptions, we propose to expand the current special exception, which I just covered with you, that 50%, that today, someone, would they meet the four conditions on their lot, they could go to the Board of Adjustment and request to have their side of rear setback modified by 50%. We're proposing moving that to 75%. So if you had a 30-foot side or rear setback today, you could go request up to 15 feet if you met those four conditions. And this would be about 21-foot reduction with the 75 foot, on a 30-foot. And then we propose a new special exception, which allows 10% reduction to the side or rear setback in all single-family zoning districts. And again, so a special exception, the main difference between a special exception and, and a variance, is that you don't have to prove hardship, and we control the criteria under ordinances versus state law, where we're, where all the edits you saw in the variance criteria coming from state law, we have a lot more control about what kind of special exceptions. Two main differences, you don't have to show hardship. And finally, the other amendments that you'll see throughout here, we added definitions for the city, green belts, sports courts, variances, special exceptions, grade measuring height. We added missing use allowances for accessory buildings, garage, swimming pools, sports courts, entry features, and all our CE districts like Willowood and Bentley Manor. Of course, those residents could build those things, but we didn't have an ordinance, so. And then we made amendments also within here in Chap, the City Policy 18, which is the Board of Adjustment policy the city council passed. There are updates to both match it to ordinance, add a special exceptions, general appeals that were missing from that policy, and amend how motions are made. And that, that's, that language you can see in there, and that came from our city attorney. That includes my presentation.
Thank you, Curtis. Bill, anything to add before we open up to council, to see if they have any questions, comments, concerns? You know, this is at the discussion phase.
Yeah, I think, I think I'll, I'll defer.
Okay. Well, I'll have a chance to go over this in greater detail. This is kind of a first blush on it, so that we have a chance to think about this stuff. And frankly, we talked about this at great length when we were talking about variances and the cost that we were going to charge. And the answer was, golly, if we can take care of nine out of 10 of these issues and not have to charge somebody a bloody fortune, then we're serving the community and we're serving our neighbors at the same time. And so I think that Bill and Curtis have sat down and said, well, where are places that we can give without actually taking from the neighbors? Conrad?
So I get, I mean, this discussion, so I just, I wonder about, like, the, the matter of freedom, I assume that Bill would have, you just automatically approve these within that, or is there a subjective area that you, you would look at each one of these? And just to follow on with that, the reason I ask that is that, do you feel like that gives you too much exposure, or too much, you get real subjective on it, then you're, you're making decisions kind of for the city there that you feel comfortable with that, I guess, and not having?
So for the variance, the primary change is we've retooled the criteria.
Yeah.
And then when we do the policy, we're going to be a bit, a little bit clearer on the process, and we're going to add a checklist in there to make the, the approval process clear for the, for the, for a variance request. So the actual processes in the, for the Board of Adjustment, in the policy and the ordinance for variances, overall, don't change at all, other than just clarification. And so when you go to special exceptions, let's talk the easiest one first. A 10%, an ability to do a, a special exception for 10% equates pretty much three feet or less in almost all, for side and rear. So, so you're talking about, how many times did somebody want to put a swimming pool or a tennis court, and they needed under three feet? And there's a few times. Most of the time, they'll just punt, and they'll adjust their plan, but they don't really like it. And then we've had a few special exceptions, and, well, we've had a few variances, and in many cases, this is where you're in that zone where the, the Board of Adjustment's likely to approve a variance if it's only a couple feet, and if he, if the guy can prove a hardship. What this does is says, hey, you're, you're pretty much doing it already in a variance, but if we just make it a special exception, it'll be easier, there'll be less consternation, and it'll, it'll, it'll be, overall, it should be better. You know, less fees for the attorney, less consternation and all that stuff. So that one, that's something we talked about. The mayor and I have been talking about a, a one-foot offset for years. Can you, can you just give slack for one foot? And then we found out, we can't do that because we're a general law city, we have to make it a special exception. So this would still say, just because you want to put your swimming pool, or your sports court, or your accessory building, a foot or two more into the setback, it's not automatic, it still has to go before the Board of Adjustment, and they still have to make a compelling case as to why it should, it should be allowed. So it's, this one is not a blank check at all. Now, the, the reduction of 50% in the setback, that's because every time that it's been considered, and, you know, it's mostly people that are backing up against a green belt, and the Board of Adjustment says you want to, you want to come into the setback, well, you're not, you're interfering with anybody, so let's just go ahead and do it. There could be a case, you know, like I live in a subdivision, and I've got a green belt that is behind me, and then there's a break between my neighbor's yard. If I wanted to put something in for a special exception, in there, you know, I've, I've just thought about this myself over and over again, it's just like, that buffer zone already gives you that, that, whatever could be that, that green belt, you know, that green belt or that buffer zone's going to provide that buffer already, pretty much automatically. So I can't see any, any disadvantage to doing this, which, which is this by right thing, you know?
Okay. Lee?
I'm trying to work through all of this to understand. There's a couple of things that I'm puzzled about. We're doing a change in all of this writing so that they don't have to go to the Board of Adjustment, and they can streamline it, so you can give approval. Is that what I'm hearing, Bill?
It's not me, it's you give approval for, if, if you have a house that backs into the City of San Antonio or a green belt, and you want to go 50%, you submit your plans, it goes to plan review, and the 30-foot setback is changed to, for that property that meets these, any of these criterias, it goes to 50%. It's a, the setback is still the same, but what's allowed is a, a reduction of 50%.
An incursion, then?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
So it's not me, it's you all establish it, and then we just evaluate it.
But there will be a record. In other words, should somebody come, should somebody come and buy that house, or one adjacent to it, or there's a change in topo, there's going to be a record of how this was done, when it was done, by whom it was done? Is that correct?
Well, this, this will obviously be permanent record of this ordinance, and then any, any proposal will be submitted by permit, there'll be a, a plan and review, and the plan and review will be that record, and it'll be doc, you know, we document that stuff.
And what's, give me a ballpark on this fee for this plan and review. What are, what are we talking about? Is there going to be a money savings for the citizen that comes up and does this under the new plan?
For this, $800.
Okay. That's.
The plan and review will be the same cost of a plan and review based upon the, the cost of it. They have to incur that anyway.
Okay. My last concern, the word hardship that you used in, in print, who determines what's a hardship? That's a floating decimal in my world.
That, that's why we are lucky to have such a top, in my opinion, top-notch Board of Adjustment, because that is a, yeah, that is a very tough decision. And, you know, the state gives very loose guidance for things like a variance to ensure substantial justice is done.
I mean, please understand, I, I like Texas, that we've got a certain looseness in the way we do things. We're not, you know, on a monorail. We've got a little bit of wiggle room on things, but for a city of this size, I, I'm looking for later on litigation to avoid. I, I'd like to have a bit more understanding of where we're going with hardship.
So you have to, you have to show you have a hardship, and that can be subjective. But even if you show you have a hardship, you go to the next slide, you, you still then have to meet all eight of those, not seven of them, not six. You got to meet all eight of those. And that's where the real, you know, the detail comes of an approval.
Okay. Pete?
Bill, so whenever you start these processes, consistency is important. So whenever you grant variances across different citizens, you want to make sure that from year to year, from case to case, there is some level of consistency. My question is, the city actually provides input to the Board of Adjustments to drive that consistency? They, you would make recommendations to the board, is that correct?
We typically do not make a recommendation. We provide the input, we evaluate, we, we tee up the, the factors associated with that, and then there's a deliberation that, that is, that is done, as they essentially have to go through each of these criteria and then go, go through that.
So in the legal world, we do case studies, right, in order to make sure that there's consistency? So how, how do we ensure consistency in this process?
Well, we do annual training with the Board of Adjustments, and we review the whole process and what the ordinance means on a year-to-year basis. But the fact of the matter is, every request for variance is different, and is based upon its own merits and hardship.
Anybody else have a question and comment? Okay. Bill, thank you very much. Curtis, thank y'all for your hard work in this.
Curtis did the majority of this work. He's done a great job of it, very deliberate, and he knows this cold.
Yeah. And to the extent that we can make the process a little bit more knowledgeable for our citizens when they're coming in, you know, getting that 10% variance because you didn't want to have an oak tree, and you didn't want to have to argue about it, those are things that our citizens will appreciate at the end of the day. Brings us to item number nine. Do we have a motion to adjourn? We have a motion from Pete. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Maggie. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. We are adjourned.